Good afternoon. Welcome to the Hamilton County Board of County Commissioners Staff Meeting. October 22nd, wow. Years flying. Well, first I ask everybody to introduce themselves on the dais.
Kristy Rushell, Assistant Clerk.
Leslie Hervey, Clerk to the Board.
Stephanie Summerall-Dumas, Commissioner.
Good afternoon. I'm County Commissioner Denise Strehouse.
Jeffaludo, County Administrator.
Patrick Dressing, Assistant Prosecuting Attorney.
Okay, and I'm Hamilton County Commission Board President Alicia Reese. Welcome. We're going to get right to it. Our first item on the agenda is Strategies to End Homelessness. An update from Kevin Finn, who is the President and CEO. Welcome back.
Thanks for having me. Appreciate the opportunity. Okay, so again, I'm Kevin Finn with Strategies to End Homelessness. Our job at Strategies is to coordinate the system of care for the homeless. We're not really a direct service provider. We're the entity that coordinates about thirty other organizations. I always compare us to the Hamilton County Mental Health and Recovery Services Board. That doesn't actually do the mental health and substance abuse treatment, but they support the other agencies that do. So that's sort of a similar role to us. We do fill a couple specific HUD required and defined roles. We are what's called the Continuum of Care Lead Agency, and HUD funds four hundred continuums of care around the country. So we're one of four hundred in that regard. HUD has given a special designation called a Unified Funding Agent to the Continuum of Care Lead Agency in fourteen of those four hundred communities across the country. And we are one of them, so we are a Unified Funding Agent that... So we redistribute the dollars on HUD's behalf. We run what's called the Coordinated Entry System. The best way I could summarize that is assume every bed is full. We are required as a community to prioritize when there is an opening, a next opening, who will get that opening. So that prioritization process, which HUD requires, is referred to as coordinated entry. We are also the Homeless Management Information System Lead Agency. I do think it's important for you all to know that Hamilton County was the first community in the country to have all of its homeless service agencies contributing data to the same data system. HUD still considers a community to be a success if eighty-five percent of your agencies contribute data to your HMIS. So I'm going to show you a lot of data. I think it's important for you all to understand this data does not exist in many communities because they can't generate it. So we're fortunate to have the kind of data we have for system planning purposes. This is a list of the organizations. So when I say we coordinate the work of over thirty other organizations, this is a list of who it is. The green dot afterward is the ones that we fund, which is most of them, but not all of them. But that is a list of our partner agencies. And some of them are partners on different types of projects, different types of housing, shelter, prevention, depending on what it is. This is an unduplicated count of people on the street, in a shelter, or fleeing domestic violence, 2013 to 2023. The reason why it is specifically shelter, street, and DV is because that's who the Department of Housing and Urban Development counts as homeless and requires us to count within the local continuum of care. So you know, the shorthand for that is this is people who are literally homeless. So you can see we had a, you know, somewhat steady rate of homelessness through 2019, then a decline in 2020, 2021, and '22, and then we had an increase in 2023. A little more information about who makes up that six thousand one hundred and forty-two people that we counted in 2023. Again, that was a two percent increase from the year before. So the vast majority of those people stayed in a shelter. So over fifty-five hundred were in a shelter. We had about eleven hundred people who were unsheltered on the streets. There are some people who go back and forth during the course of the year, which is why those add up to a higher total. Because some people go back and forth, spend part of the year on the street, part of the year in a shelter. So we had eighteen percent of our total homeless population that spent at least part of the year on the street. We did in 2023 see a significant increase, not in the overall homelessness increase was less than two percent, but the unsheltered portion saw a significant increase, forty-six percent, in 2023, which unfortunately appears to be continuing this year. I'll get to that in just a second. So we had eight point six percent of our homeless population that exclusively slept on the street, never came into a shelter, that sort of thing. Some comparison, as I mentioned, eighteen percent of our population was on the street. This is from the U.S. Interagency Council on Homelessness. Nationally, sixty percent of people experiencing homelessness are in a shelter or other temporary housing, and forty percent are unsheltered on the street. So while we have seen an increase in unsheltered homelessness in the last year and a half, two years, we're at eighteen percent, and the national average is forty percent unsheltered. This slide, a little confusing. You probably just want to look at the very end. This is just the first nine months of each of these years. So last year, and this is in shelter, so if you look just at the last two years, twenty... This is the first nine months of 2023 compared to the first nine months of 2024. We have seen an increase in the number of people served in shelter. Our shelter capacity has been steady so that it has not gone up or down. So that is an increase in the number of people coming into a service that has not changed. On the other hand, this is people unsheltered on the street. So we had an increase, a forty-six percent increase in 2023. And in 2024, we've seen significantly more people in the first nine months on the street than we saw last year. So that trend toward more people being unsheltered on the street has unfortunately continued. This has not remained static, though there is one sort of wild card in here, which is noted at the bottom of the slide. We started a new street outreach program, Leslie and I were just talking about. We started a new street outreach program in May that is specifically targeted at finding families that are sleeping in their cars, because that is a very frequent occurrence for families. So we have a new street outreach program specifically targeting that group of people. So you could argue that some percentage of this increase is the fact that we added more street outreach capacity. But we don't, we can't tell yet how much of it is just because we're doing a better job of finding them versus there being simply more people who are on the street. This is a quote I pulled from a report from the Interagency Council on Homelessness. What we are seeing, unfortunately, in Hamilton County mirrors national trends. So homelessness, what this basically says is homelessness in America has been rising since 2016, particularly with people sleeping in unsheltered settings. The Interagency Council points toward, and I would agree with this, rising housing costs being the primary cause of that, as well as people being unsheltered on the street who need mental health and substance abuse treatment. So this is a quote from a national organization, but I think it mirrors our experience, unfortunately, here in Hamilton County. So while we are seeing some of the same trends that were, have been seen nationally, the silver lining is we're not seeing them at the same extent that is the national average. So from 2022 to 2023, homeless national, homelessness nationally increased by twelve point one percent. In Hamilton County, it was two percent. Unsheltered homelessness, as I already mentioned, nationally, basically have forty percent of people who are unsheltered on the street. Hamilton County, it's eighteen percent. Though noted at the bottom was the significant increase in 2023. We were at twelve percent of our homeless population being unsheltered on the street prior to 2023. It went up to eighteen percent in 2023, and again, the national average is basically forty percent. Some local context as to why. Increased housing cost is the big thing. You know, this is really not rocket science. If the problem is homelessness, the answer is housing. So the increased cost of housing has been a nationwide issue. But as has been documented by Redfin and other organizations, the increased cost of housing, it's gone up more quickly in Cincinnati-Hamilton County than the national average. So that is the biggest reason why we're seeing more homelessness. Also, in terms of people who are unsheltered on the street, when the housing market is really, really tight, property owners can be very selective. And people who are chronically homeless, people who are coming off the street, people that are exiting the homeless services system just look less desirable to property owners, and therefore, they are the hardest people to find housing for, especially the sort of chronically homeless group that is on the street most often. Several other factors, expiring COVID funds. You all know this because you allocated a lot of the COVID funds. So the fact that there is so much less COVID funding available currently, both for shelter diversion and for emergency rental assistance programs, is a significant factor. There is a fraction of the amount of emergency rental assistance to help people with eviction notices now compared to a couple years ago. And even you all were very generously allocated three million dollars toward shelter diversion services. I should have mentioned when I started, Angela King is here with me from the Free Store Food Bank. The Free Store is our biggest partner in the shelter diversion program. So I asked Angela to be here so that if you specifically had questions about diversion, she's a little more boots on the ground than I am. And then one of the innovative homelessness prevention projects that is from other money that you all allocated of COVID funds for innovative homelessness prevention, the Free Store Food Bank is also operating one of those programs. So I thought Angela could help perhaps with questions about that too. So thank you for being here. So, but the expiring COVID funds is a significant factor. The shelter diversion program, we're having to reduce the capacity at this point. That is a six-month program. But we're anticipating exhausting the COVID funds that were allocated to that by January. So we've already had to start dialing that program back. One thing you may or may not be aware of is there's been a lot of changes in recent months about how aggressive police are with homeless camp enforcement. There was a Supreme Court decision earlier this year that basically said it was okay for local jurisdictions to ticket and fine and even jail homeless people for sleeping outside. I am happy to say that I don't see the Cincinnati Police Department or the Hamilton County Sheriff's Department doing that. But some of the surrounding communities are. So we have seen an uptick in people who are coming to sleep in encampments in Hamilton County simply to avoid being ticketed or fined somewhere outside the county. And then a lot of times, these people come in, they sleep in a camp in Hamilton County, and they wake up in the morning and they go back to wherever. So we have seen an increase in the number of people from surrounding areas that are sleeping in encampments in Hamilton County. Another significant issue that I mentioned briefly before is mental health and substance use. While the average homeless person, you know, when you consider everyone who's in shelter and that sort of thing, does not have a mental illness or does not have a substance use issue, the people who are out unsheltered on the street have very high rates of substance use and mental health issues. And to a large extent, that's why they are out on the street. And, you know, a lot of times in the homeless services world, we're given these dollars by HUD, for example, that only pay for housing, do not pay for substance abuse treatment, does not pay for mental health treatment. And sometimes the housing dollars just aren't there for the right tool to solve the problem kind of thing. So those are all issues at play. To give you a little perspective on, a little more data on how we compare to some other communities, this is two measures that we report to HUD, returns to homelessness or recidivism. You can see that in Cincinnati-Hamilton County, about nineteen percent of people who are homeless, who exit homelessness, will become homeless again within two years. The national average is eighteen point three percent, so we're just above the national average. And what you see below there is for And what you see below there is for other major cities in Ohio, Toledo, 23%. They're all slightly higher than we are. That gives you some comparison of how many of our people, once we get them into housing, become homeless again. Length of stay in homelessness. On average, a person is homeless in Cincinnati-Hamilton County for 60 days. The national average is 166 days, and we're actually doing a little better than all these other Ohio cities who all have longer lengths of homelessness than we have. So a little bit about the latest efforts to reduce homelessness locally. First is the shelter diversion program. Now, I shouldn't, I'm going to mention at this point, because I know part of my being here today, I think, was triggered by some information Cincinnati Public Schools presented to the board. The Department of Education uses a different definition of homelessness. Department of Education uses, in my opinion, a more reasonable definition of homelessness. They count people who are doubled up and sleeping like couch to couch as homeless. HUD does not. So we, in HUD world where I live, we refer to shelter diversion as a prevention program. But these are households that would be counted as homeless in a Department of Education context. So these doubled up families would be a part of what CPS reported in terms of number of homeless students. But they're not in the street shelter and DV numbers. So in large part, thanks to the $3 million that you all allocated in COVID funding to the shelter diversion program. In 2022 and 2023, we served the most people that have ever been served in that program. So we were able to serve more households with those dollars. So shelter diversion is a key strategy to reducing homelessness. Other efforts that are going on, the additional $1.8 million of ARPA funding that you all were good enough to allocate to innovative homelessness prevention projects. This is a list of those projects in which agencies received those dollars. As mentioned, the Free Store is one of those projects with their New Americans Project. So this is a list of how those dollars got allocated and to who. These projects are a little different timeline, since we started spending the shelter diversion dollars as soon as you all started alloc, allocated them to us. They are about to expire. They will expire in January, whereas these projects are all largely are just beginning in 2024 and have until the end, Angela, I don't know if you know, end of 2026, I think it is, to, to utilize the dollars. Does that sound right to you?
A review in October of 2025, and then post.
Review, and at that point, we may shift dollars around if some projects are doing better than others and need additional funding, and then spend it out in 2026. So that's a list of those projects. Couple other things that I just wanted to mention to you all quickly so that you know they are happening. I already mentioned the new family street outreach pilot program that started in May of 2024. That's to make sure that we do a better job of getting families that are unsheltered into shelter and/or housing. The Housing Stability Collaborative is a new project we just started in July. It's funded by the City of Cincinnati, using predictive data analytics to identify families at the highest risk of getting an eviction notice. And we are, with partner agencies, we are proactively reaching out to those households with the goal being that we can address whatever their housing issue is without them ever getting the eviction notice. Most services become cheaper, lower cost, the more upstream you go. So we're trying to go as upstream as we possibly can to find families that might eventually come into the homeless services system. So that's the Housing Stability Collaborative. I mentioned before that property owners don't always want to rent to people that are coming out of the homeless services system. So in August of last year, a project, we started a project with our partners called Rent Connect, which is a property owner engagement program where we recruit property owners and provide them with incentives to rent to people that are coming out of the homeless services system. Be the Change Cincy is an initiative where we've partnered with a couple of local neighborhoods. It's basically a panhandling deterrent initiative. The Be the Change Cincy website is being marketed in some communities that, to give people in the community an alternative to giving money to panhandlers and instead easily donate to nonprofits. So that's Be the Change Cincy, primarily in Westwood at this point, but Camp Washington and Clifton have both been looking at utilizing that as well. And then the last thing I would mention, we have been working for a couple of years now with a organization called Warrior Homesteads, which is based out in Butler County. They manufacture tiny homes. So we've been working with them to explore the possibility of doing a tiny homes community here in Hamilton County, utilizing the, the house, tiny homes that they already built or build. So those are sort of some of the, the newer things and yet to come things that are going on in an effort to reduce homelessness. And that is what I wanted to present to you. I'm happy to, I just threw an awful lot at you. So any questions you have, I'm happy.
And we've got more sheets here that you didn't get to.
Oh, I, you have the PowerPoint? I threw a couple of other slides in that I thought might help me answer questions, but that I wasn't necessarily going to speak to unless you had questions that pertain to them.
Okay. I'm just paging through them quickly. So I have a couple of questions, and I'm sure Commissioner Semeros Dumas does as well. So I was just, by way of data, in some of the slides that you presented, there seems to have been a trend until 2023, downward trend on some of these graphs, and then we've got a bit of a bump up in 2024. To what do you attribute that?
The main thing I would attribute it to is the expiration of the COVID funding. I mean, again, this is not rocket science. The, the money that Jobs and Family Services was distributing for emergency rental assistance on behalf of the county, as well as the dollars that Community Action Agency was distributing on behalf of the City of Cincinnati. You know, if you help people keep their housing, homelessness goes down. And a lot of those dollars really started to expire during 2023. Community Action Agency, I believe, stopped taking applications in August or September of last year. JFS, I think, managed to take them basically till the end of the year. But the expiration of the COVID dollars, I think, is the biggest explanation for that. If you fund prevention, fewer people become homeless. The reality is that in normal times, there's almost no funding available for prevention.
Yeah, so that's, I'm glad you said that at the very end there, because I was wondering, because we dedicated so much towards eviction prevention during COVID. Prior to that, what resources were being made available for eviction prevention?
Community Action Agency has always had a limited amount of funding for emergency rental assistance, and St. Vincent de Paul has always done emergency rental assistance. They use a combination of a few hundred thousand dollars a year they get from the City of Cincinnati, but primarily private donations is how they fund their emergency rental assistance. And they are still doing that, and they do an unbelievably good job. But now they're doing it in the absence of JFS and Community Action, doing it at least at anywhere near the scale they were doing it during the pandemic. So St. Vincent de Paul, to some extent, is the only game left in town for that.
And, and do they interface with the eviction court? I'm wondering, because I had a recent conversation with Councilmember Mika Owens about the Help Center and about how they, too, are trying to use prevention, eviction prevention dollars to, for like one month, to keep folks from having, or being evicted through eviction court. And, you know, kind of what that looks like, where that funding's coming from. Is there a connection between those two, or are they operating separately? Or do you know?
The city has several current things going related to eviction prevention. So first of all, the Housing Stability Collaborative, the predictive data analytics project I was describing before, is a three-year grant from the City of Cincinnati that we received along with six partner agencies. So they are funding that work that is targeted at keeping people from ever getting the eviction notice. They are also funding a right to counsel program. You know, most people, when they walk into eviction court, don't have an attorney with them, and therefore things don't go their way. So they are also funding a right to counsel program to increase the percentage of people facing eviction who have an attorney helping them when they arrive at court. They're also funding the Help Center that's located inside the courthouse. At least, I believe they're providing funding to that, which is, again, is targeted toward helping people get connected to resources that will head off their eviction rather than having the proceeding go through. They have, and then they're also providing, as I mentioned briefly before, they provide funding to St. Vincent de Paul to do emergency rental assistance, and I believe they also fund legal aid.
Okay. Yeah, and some of our dollars are going to the same agency. So it's important to understand all this collaboration that's happening between the city and the county. I just have one other question. So you mentioned tiny homes. We've talked about tiny homes here a couple of times for different kinds of populations, be it the homeless population or veterans, or it's been kicked around a number of times. And you say that you've been working with the Warrior Homesteads Group, and so, but have, but no tiny homes have been built. And so I'm wondering, are there things standing in the way of that happening? What are the challenges? How would one start to build these tiny homes?
We need a site. I mean, we build these giant, fancy, beautiful, $10 million apartment buildings that most neighborhoods would be proud to have, and they end up tied up in court for five or six years before we can build them. So whether you're talking about like Commons and South Covensville, that National Church Residence is built over the Ryan Community Housing, has had multiple projects tied up in court, the Anna Louie Zen, I mean, you try to build a housing development to serve people who are homeless, and you're going to spend at least five years in court. That's with a big fancy apartment building. Imagine the neighbors find out you want to build a tiny home community in their neighborhood, because generally, the reason we run into so much resistance is the neighbors think the property values are going to be negatively affected. And I, I think if we spend five years in court for a big fancy apartment building, we're going to spend 10 years in court for a tiny homes community. So Victoria Parks on Cincinnati City Council is also very interested in this idea. And what I told to her, and I'm waiting to hear back from her on it, is what we really need is a site that government, a government entity already has control of or ownership of. If we try to buy a site, we're, we're just going to end up in court, the way so many of these other housing projects for the homeless have been tied up in court. So I think the way we could hit the fast forward button on a tiny homes community would be to have either the city or the county help us identify the site, and then we could move on from there. Hopefully, that would limit the amount of legal entanglements. But tiny homes tend to target, like we're seeing an increase in unsheltered homelessness, that's typically the population that a tiny home works best for. Because you're not requiring them to go into some big shelter with a bunch of strangers, you're not requiring them to go into a big apartment building with a bunch of strangers, you're giving them a space of their own that in some ways is reminiscent of the camp they might be sleeping in, but much nicer amenities. That, for a lot of people who are unsheltered, is their first step out of homelessness. Maybe after a year or two in a tiny home, they're ready to move on to a more traditional housing option, but the site is the big hangup. We could actually fund it with the HUD dollars. We couldn't do the capital to buy the tiny homes, but operating dollars and services dollars on an ongoing basis and all that could all be funded with the HUD dollars. But the, the big thing we need is a site, and then probably a couple hundred thousand dollars for the first set of homes.
Okay, well, we all sit on the land bank, so it's an ongoing conversation with the members of the board. So thanks for the information.
There is a little bit of an art to that. I mean, given the population that would be served, like, it does need to have access to public transportation. We can't put people in the middle of nowhere away from any grocery stores or anything like that. So a combination of a site that government has control of, but that still meets those criteria, that's what we would need.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Dumas.
Thank you. Thank you for your presentation. Thank you for your summary that I received. It was awesome, very detailed, which is what I like. And your presentation also was very detailed. I'm really pretty positive about a few things you said. I'm concerned about the return to homelessness, even though we're lower than the national average of almost 40%. And it goes back to what you were saying about tiny homes. You know, I brought, brought that up myself with the port and, you know, port indicators, really, you can't make any money off the homes. We're not trying to make any money, but it should not, finding a piece of land should not be an obstacle for Hamilton County, and I've said this before. It would be great if we could, if we could do that. I was wondering specific questions. Well, I have an article here from WKRC, and you indicated Strategies is managing a $30 million annual budget from the federal government, and I won't read through the whole thing, but it talks about, the money cannot be used for prevention programs like rental and employment assistance, which you mentioned. And you suggested that money would be better spent on prevention. You've also said that when you were speaking, and I'm thinking about our lobbyists that go up and speak to our legislature, even though it may not be a popular subject, that we're, we're doing, well, not great, we're doing things we need to do to house our people, but prevention is so important to hope that they don't go back to homelessness. So that's not your responsibility as far as lobbying, but I think we need to talk more about it. When you talk about being in court for 10 years for a homeless site, well, that happens when you do, when mental health homes are going into a neighborhood. But I think we can defeat that battle. I think we can find some land. And you were talking about the elements that you could possibly fund, which is great. I had a question about, and I know you, you work with them, but like Josh Springs and Brian Gary, if they're out there doing the work, they're not on the partner list, but do you reach out to them? Do they reach out to you to try to help with this homeless situation? Or how does that work when other groups, other than Strategies, is dealing with homelessness? I know you have partners, many of them, but they're sort of doing their own thing. So do you guys coordinate at all? Because I always get a, let me pull the, you know, always get a notice about their meetings and stuff, so do, can you just answer that?
It's just sort of different roles. So, you know, I, I certainly could have included the Coalition on there. That list is primarily organizations that are doing some sort of housing program. Which, the Coalition is a huge partner of ours, but they don't run a housing program, so that's the only reason that they're not on there. I am the former chair of the Board of the Homeless Coalition way back when, so I have long ties with them. One of the things that HUD requires us to do is have what is called a Continuum of Care Board, which is a community-based group that helps oversee the homeless services system. Josh has a seat on that board, has for years. So we work very, very closely with the Homeless Coalition. I know Brian Gary very well. Periodically, he'll reach out to me about individual people he's trying to help, and I try to connect him to resources. So those are both people who we work with, but particularly the Homeless Coalition. They are more of an advocacy group, which is great, we totally need that. That list of our partners is more people that, or organizations that run some kind of housing program.
Okay, thank you. And we were talking about the CPS children that are living in their homes, and I think Jeff told me there's a Choice Project or something that's working. I thought the name was. Project, okay. Okay, so when we hear about that, and they're dealing with those young people in the, in the cars, do you reach out to see if they need help in any way, or do you just kind of allow them to do what they're doing?
So we work closely with them as well. Rebecca Beach from Project Connect also serves on that COC board. So that's the group that gives us our marching orders, sort of, on a regular basis. So they, they also are seated there. The majority of families that they are working with are doubled up, sleeping couch to couch and that sort of thing. So they regularly refer people over to us, particularly for that shelter diversion service, because that's the one targeted at families that are doubled up. And then in terms of placements into shelters, there are only two programs that get any sort of like preferential access to shelter capacity. One is that new street outreach program I was talking about before, where we have like seen with our own eyes that this family's sleeping in a car. The other is Project Connect. So if they have a family that they, that they're working with who is doubled up, we may or may not be able to get them into shelter diversion right away, but if they have a family that is on the street, they let us know, and we work to get that family into a shelter as soon as possible, or into a housing program. It's not necessarily required that they go into shelter first in order to get into a housing program, but that is the pattern that most families follow. So we So we do work closely with them.
Great. I think this is finally, I scribbled all over. Really impressed with your family outreach program and what you realized you needed to do to get out there to identify even more people that were in trouble. And I'm also very impressed when you had in your packet, I think it was like six or seven new programs or projects that you started in 2023, and then this year also. And what that tells me is that you're listening, that you're listening to me, to the Board, and not that we came up with those, but you realize, how can I do something a little differently? And that's really good when people are open to see that. And as I was saying, they all started in '23 or '24. So you looked at things a little differently, and I certainly appreciate that. So thank you. That's all I have.
I should have mentioned also that the county has a seat on that COC board as well. Maria Collins, I think it is, who currently is occupying that seat. So the county does also have a voice at that table as well, as does the city of Cincinnati.
Great. Thank you very much. Thank you for the presentation. I had to step out for a moment, but I do appreciate the data, because if it can't be measured, then to me, it's like throwing money towards something, and we have no clue. One question I just want to ask, you have a pretty bold name in terms of the organization, Strategies to End Homelessness. Are we moving in a, I know we got a lot of partners, and we get more and more, but if someone hears that, they want to see data to show a downward spiral of homelessness going kind of down. Could you tell us in your expertise of where are we moving toward that? Because we're trying to get toward, obviously, ending homelessness, I don't think will actually happen. But I do think reducing the homeless numbers to end, toward ending it would be great. Can you tell us where we're moving? Because you said we're up like two, we're going upwards of two.
Well, we, yeah, we went down several years in a row, three years in a row, and then we saw a 2% increase last year, and unfortunately, are anticipating another increase this year. The silver lining is that our increases are nowhere near the national averages. So, you know, 12% increase in homelessness nationally, 2% locally. I think the main reason for that is, like Commissioner Dumas, I would challenge a little bit, you said it wasn't my job to do advocacy. I think it is my job to do advocacy, because the reality is, most communities don't do prevention. And we have made a strategic choice that we are going to emphasize doing prevention. That's why I come knocking on your doors for money for shelter diversion and things like that. And the reason why then it becomes my job to do advocacy is since most communities don't do prevention, most communities don't have data on prevention. So it's the responsibility of communities like ours, where we do have prevention, and we can show that it works, that it leads to us having fewer people becoming homeless in our community when compared to other communities. Like, we need to, quite frankly, beat HUD over the head with that data, because what we would really like to see happen is for them to just let us use some of the money they're already providing for prevention. Like, I don't even want to ask HUD to give us more money, but the 20-something million dollars a year that they give to us, we are required to wait for people to already be on the street or in a shelter or fleeing domestic violence before we can do anything for them. And to me, that's just terrible. What I would love for them to do, let us just take 10% of the money that you're already giving us and shift it to prevention, where we can serve three times as many people with the same amount of money. That's how we would really reduce homelessness. And I think the reason why we had a three-year reduction prior to last year, in part, was that emphasis on prevention. But we need to, you know, document that and convince the federal government to make that change. To that end, we just started a study of the shelter diversion program with something called the Lab for Economic Opportunity, which is a part of the Economics Department at Notre Dame. They began a research study on our shelter diversion program that is going to give us a rigorously done study that we can take to the federal government to like make the argument of this is why you should be letting us use money for prevention. That like literally just started earlier this month, so it'll be at least a year before we have a complete study or even a preliminary to use for that purpose. That should also help with fundraising for prevention programs, because according to the people at Notre Dame, less than 1% of human services interventions have any research to back up that they work. So we want our projects to be a part of that 1%, because it'll help us secure ongoing funding for those projects. So I think what makes us different, it's a long answer to your question, I apologize, but I think what makes us different and why we're seeing lower rates is simply because of that emphasis on prevention.
Your data too. Well, and I'm hoping to talk about why are people homeless? Because I was reading something where they were saying that, I know we hear a lot about domestic violence, and we have different shelters, et cetera, but we don't hear about those who went bankrupt because of medical bills. And I'm hoping, and I read something, can't remember where I read it, but I did read about that that is also making families go homeless.
It's generally economic factors. You know, they take different, there are different versions and variations. No two households are the same, but it is generally just economic factors. Most homeless people do not have a drug and alcohol problem. Most people do not have a mental health issue. They are homeless because they don't have enough dollars to afford housing. And, you know, we're surrounded by people who are spending 60% of their income to keep a roof over their head. And if you're spending more than half of your money on anything, you know, what happens when all of a sudden your hours get cut at work, or you get sick and you miss a few weeks, or the car breaks down and you can't get it repaired? All of a sudden, your rent is the main thing that you can't afford to pay, because it's so much of your budget. And that's, it's those kind of economic conditions that are why most people become homeless. And what you cited were sort of different examples of some of those conditions.
Thank you. Well, I want to thank you. The outreach program, I know you said it just started. I know that's something I've been really on, trying to get that moving, but it just started. So I know you'll have more data soon about it, but I know you had mentioned it the last time you were here.
So how about this, or something that's scary? So in 2023, we found 11 families unsheltered on the street in the entire year. Since we started that outreach program in May, we have found 85 families. So in well less than a year, we have found way more families sleeping in their cars and things like that. So I don't think that that is prime, that is, could be partially just an increase in the number of families sleeping on the street, but I think a good chunk of it is just we're doing a better job of finding them, because they try to stay out of sight for fear that their children will be taken away if people realize they're sleeping in their cars. So we're definitely doing a better job of finding them. You might find it interesting that we managed to receive a $5 million grant from Jeff Bezos a couple of years ago. That was to be addressed toward family homelessness. Most of that funding we're passing through to other agencies. That outreach program is a new partnership with Greater Cincinnati Behavioral, which is our largest street outreach agency. They're actually the ones who are going out and doing it. But that's how we're funding it initially, to get it off the ground and make sure it serves a purpose and it works.
Awesome. Well, thank you for that, and thank you for the update on the tiny houses, because I think all of us say, hey, we need them. I'd like to see them for homeless and veterans. I'm interested in that. But you raised some important components in terms of land and zoning and those kind of obstacles that may be, well, there may be obstacles that need to be overcome.
One of the nice selling points, I'll just mention while I have your attention, about a tiny home, is that you can use a site temporarily. Since it's not like a huge building built on that site, you could use a site for a tiny home community just for a year or two while a neighborhood is working on putting together some other economic development project or something like that. And then when they're ready to use the site for some other purpose, the tiny homes could be relocated elsewhere. So it's not the same level of like, you're going to have this here forever, that it would be with some other projects. It can actually be moved to a different site if there were reason to do so.
That's good. That's good to know. We've got money for site readiness every year. And I think Easter Seals is working on a, I don't know, I think it's tiny homes for veterans, if I'm not mistaken, in Walnut Hills.
I've not talked to Pam about that, so I'll check.
Yeah, but they did announce something for veterans. I thought it was great. Commissioner Dumas, you had something?
Yeah, just a couple of comments. And when you say about temporary, we're hoping that it's temporary anyway, because you're in a small home, but we would like for you to be in a normal setting. So yeah, that's good, that it can be temporary and maybe moved around. But I wanted to mention about the advocacy thing, and we don't differ on it. When I said you can't advocate, or not for you to advocate, if you were not an advocate for homelessness, you wouldn't be standing there. But what I'm saying is that we need someone other than you who would be getting the money thumbed into your organization to appear, either homeless people or the lobbyists that we pay to do that. So you can advocate, and you do every day.
Any help with that?
Yeah, so I wanted to clarify that. So that's all I had.
Okay. Thank you. Well, your three goals, you said prevent, assist, and solve. And it seems like we are doing something on prevention, but we need more help with that. And then the solving part of it.
That's where most of the federal government money goes. It goes to housing programs post-homelessness. So that's where we are best resourced. It is actually dollars to help people who are homeless today, that's lacking. The $2 million of Indigent Care Levy funding that you all provide to us and that we redistribute to five shelters helps with that, helping people who are homeless today. And then the COVID funds you allocated to both shelter diversion and the innovative homelessness prevention projects also helps with that.
Awesome. Yes, Vice President Reese. One of the times you were in, talking about these dynamics, you mentioned that you were seeing more families than we have in the past that are experiencing homelessness. Is that still the trend?
It is still the trend that we're seeing more families. The problem is quantifying that, because a lot of times if families, if they have not reached out for any sort of assistance yet, we haven't been able to identify them, we can't count them. So it's not until a family typically reaches out for some sort of service that we know they're out there and need assistance. And we know that there's always more families out there than have actually requested some sort of service. So it's hard to know how many families are in those sorts of situations. We know, because we also talk to Cincinnati Public Schools and Project Connect, that there are a lot more of them than we're already aware of. But there aren't really good, reliable data sources on how many of those families are out there.
Okay.
The family shelters have a pretty fixed capacity. So how many families we count in shelter is really more of a reflection of the shelter's capacity than it is how many families might want to get into shelter.
Well, and you are funding some of those family shelters, you know, and I feel like that was a recognition of this trend, that you were seeing more families, and so you have to shift and be a little bit nimble in that space. But I just wondered if that's, you know, there's still a trend, and it sounds like maybe it is, but it's hard to quantify.
Yeah. One of the advantages of being that unified funding agent that I mentioned earlier, that we're one of only 14 communities that has that arrangement, is we then have the ability to shift dollars around to meet the needs. So if more people were homeless with HIV, and there were fewer young people experiencing homelessness, we could shift money from lighthouse to carnicol in order to meet the need. If the money's not all going through one local entity, you're not allowed to do that sort of thing.
Thank you. Commissioner Dumas, you had something else?
So one other thing. So as you mentioned about the families that went from 11 families to 86 families, and so I look at your graph that you have, it has individuals, adults, and the children. Maybe the next time when you come in, we can start putting families on that graph, so we can actually see how much it goes up.
I already have that. It just didn't fit in a PowerPoint, so I can just email it to you if you want.
That's great. Thank you.
Okay.
Yes, Mr. Aludo?
Kevin, thanks for the presentation. And just so I don't lose track of it, the prevention work that you talked about, I think you know Anson Turley, you guys have worked together a little bit, as Anson reached out on some of the tiny homes issues for the administration. Anson coordinates our government affairs work at the state and federal level. So if there is an opportunity to leverage some of our resources at the federal level to try to work on that issue of prevention funding versus response, we'd like to, with the Board's concurrence, we'd like to start those conversations with our federal lobbyist as well. So if we, if I could just ask you two to hook up sometime, that would be great.
Absolutely.
Awesome.
I brought Angel already down, all the way down here. Anybody want to ask her? Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. And I want to say those tiny houses aren't too bad. I've seen them. They look nice on the inside. So thank you very much for the presentation. Thank you, Angela, for coming down. Okay, next on the agenda, our 2025 through 2029 Consolidated Plan and 2025 Action Plan. I feel like we've said this already, but I know we haven't. It's a whole lot of, we've been taking a lot of action plans lately, but this one is the Consolidated Plan. Welcome back.
Another plan, of course. Well, good afternoon, President Reese, Vice Presidency House, and Commissioner Summero Dumas. As you all know, I'm Maria Collins, Community Development Administrator in the Planning and Development Department. And I have here today to co-present with me is one of the program managers, Gaines Brown. And we're here today to give an overview and an update of the 2025-2029 Consolidated Plan and 25 Action Plan, the process that we're going through at this particular time. And there we go. So, so every five years, Hamilton County is required to complete and submit a consolidated plan to HUD. The CON Plan is designed to help states and local jurisdictions assess their affordable housing and community development needs and market conditions, as well as to make data-driven, place-based investment decisions. The CON Plan planning process serves as the framework for community-wide dialogue to identify housing and community development priorities that align with focused funding from HUD's Office of Community Planning and Development's Funding Formula Block Grant Programs, which consists of the Community Development Block Grant Program, the Home Investment Partnership Program, the Emergency Solutions Grant Program, and Home ARP. The Consolidated Plan is carried out through the Annual Action Plans, which provide a concise summary of the actions and specific federal and non-federal resources that'll be used each year to address priority needs and specific goals that have been identified by the Consolidated Plan. And the grantees' accomplishments and progresses towards those CON Plan goals in the prior year are then reported through the Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report, also called the CAPR. Hamilton County receives an annual entitlement of approximately $5.4 million. And that entitlement consists of the Community Development Block Grants. We receive approximately $3.4 million annually from HUD. The Home Investment Partnership Program, the county receives approximately $1.3 million. And the Emergency Solutions Grant, the county receives just over $290,000 annually from HUD. Now, in 2021, HUD awarded the county $5.4 million through the Home ARP Program to help qualifying populations who are at risk of homelessness or experiencing homelessness throughout Hamilton County. Approximately $4.5 million of those funds will be expended over the five-year Consolidated Plan period for affordable rental housing, supportive services, and administration. Now, the elements of the Consolidated Plan, there are six elements that make up this Consolidated Plan. The first of those elements is the citizen engagement. This is where the grantee jurisdiction engages the community, both in the process and developing and reviewing the proposed plan. The second element of the Consolidated Plan is the analysis of impediments to fair housing. As recipients of funds from HUD, we have a duty to affirmatively further fair housing by taking proactive steps to overcome housing discrimination and segregation. The fair housing analysis focuses on patterns of integration and segregation, racially and ethnically concentrated areas of poverty, disparities in access to opportunities, and disproportionate housing needs. disproportionate housing needs. The recommendations that are, come out of the affirmative fair housing report will be used to inform future policies in Hamilton County that will promote fair housing choices and inclusive communities. The third element of the consolidated plan is the needs assessment. The needs assessment helps set criteria for determining how to best allocate available money, people, facilities, and other resources. It also leads to actions that will improve programs, services, organizational structures, and operations, or a combination of these elements. The fourth element of the consolidated plan is the housing market analysis. Now, this is a process of collecting and analyzing all relevant information that's needed to make informed decisions about acquisition, sale, and rental of housing throughout Hamilton County. The fifth element of the consolidated plan is the housing and non-housing programs. Now, these are the programs that have been created to administer the HUD funding for housing and non-housing programs, such as the Home Program for the Creation and Preservation of Affordable Housing, the Home ARP Affordable Rental Housing Program, and the new Countywide Home Improvement Program. There's also the Nonprofit Services Program, the CDAP Program, and the new Countywide Improvement, a facade improvement pilot program, just to name a few of the programs that are administered or that we use to administer HUD funds throughout the county. And the sixth element of the consolidated plan is the Annual Action Plan. Now, the consolidated plan is carried out through the annual action plans that'll provide a concise summary of the actions and activities and specific federal and non-federal resources that'll be used each year to address the priority needs and specific goals identified in the consolidated plan. So this is the citizen participation efforts that we have taken in the consolidated plan process. And we're achieving citizen participation in this process through the following outreach efforts. We have held, we've provided surveys or shared surveys at public meetings. Through that process and effort, we have reached 80 people. There are public hearings that we will be holding in the coming months in order to get additional comments about the plan. We have also posted surveys online as well as on Facebook. And through that effort, we have reached 8,000 people, and of that, we have received 452 responses. And we have also distributed surveys to targeted LMI communities, such as Lincoln Hikes, Lachlan, Cheviot, Addiston, Mount Healthy, and Gulf Manor. We've also distributed paper copies to senior centers, community centers, the 513 bus, and through a reentry event. Through these efforts, we have distributed a total of 300 surveys, and we have received 100 responses back from that effort. Now, I will turn over the next portion of the presentation to Gaines Brown to provide an overview of the results from the Needs Assessment Survey results.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. I would like to begin by expressing my gratitude to Maria Collins, who's my supervisor, for granting me this opportunity to speak to you all today. My name is Gaines Brown, and I am a program manager with Hamilton County's Community Development Division. Today, I'll be presenting some of the preliminary data analysis from our Needs Assessment Survey as part of our consolidated plan. Please note that we have disseminated this survey without any incentives. You'll be pleased to hear that we observed a 57% increase in survey participation from the previous consolidated plan survey without any incentives whatsoever. Our success in this undertaking has only been made possible due to the collaboration and hard work of the Community Development and Community Planning Divisions, along with the Office of Media and Engagement, to strategically engage in social media marketing and community outreach. I would like to acknowledge my colleagues, April Galeli, Tanya Hill, Katie Valley, and Sarita Robertson, for their efforts ensuring we engage with all participating local governments and key stakeholders. Our efforts to engage with Hamilton County constituents and partner organizations provides us with the empirical data necessary to make data-informed decisions for our funding allocations to projects and services that improve the quality of life of county constituents. This data dispersion that you see on the slide is a heat map of all the survey completes that we have observed since our survey became active on August 19th. We have received a total of 552 survey completes to date, and we'll have over 600 survey completes once we collect all of our paper surveys by the end of October. Moreover, you will see that a significant portion of our survey responses are in the jurisdictions shaded in dark blue, and those are located in Mount Healthy, Delhi, and Sharonville communities. The lighter shaded areas on the heat map represent the areas in which we received moderate to low quantity of responses. This heat map will certainly change as we are currently in the process of collecting and transcribing those paper survey responses. And next, I want to talk to you all about some of the survey results that we have found thus far. So we're going to begin our discussion with the top funding priorities for the Emergency Solutions Grant, or ESG. 454 respondents shared that their top funding priorities for ESG were preventing homelessness with emergency assistance, permanent supportive housing for people with disabilities, rapid rehousing programs with rental assistance, and operating shelters for families. Next, we will look at the survey results for the top funding priorities for public infrastructure. 451 respondents shared that their top funding priorities for public infrastructure were streets and roads, sidewalk insulation or improvements, water and sewer line improvements, and bike and walk paths. Next, we will look at the survey results for community development. And 448 respondents shared that their top funding priorities for community development were redevelopment of vacant properties, property maintenance and code enforcement, financial assistance for small businesses, and traffic control. Next, we have the survey results for social services. 435 respondents shared that their top funding priorities for social services were mental health services, property maintenance, employment or job training, and food banks and access, increased access to fresh food. Next, we have the top funding priorities for housing. 440 respondents shared that their top priorities for housing were housing repair grants for income-qualified homeowners, emergency assistance with rent and utility bills, construction of new affordable housing, and housing repair loans for income-qualified homeowners. Next, we have the survey results for housing-specific assistance. 422 respondents shared that their top funding priorities for housing-specific assistance are senior housing, family housing, housing for people with disabilities, and housing for veterans. And lastly, we have the survey results demonstrating their top difficulties for transportation. 421 respondents shared that their top difficulties with transportation are bus routes are not at a convenient time, they experience difficulty getting to grocery and other shopping, additionally, they experience difficulty getting to medical services, or they have no bus routes near them. And I'm going to hand it back over to Maria Collins, who's going to give it, give us more information about our consolidated plan programmatic goals.
Okay. So these are the 2025-2029 programmatic goals. These goals are the same as the goals that were in the previous consolidated plan. These goals consist of eliminating slum and blighted properties, furthering fair housing, improving public facility in participating communities, improving public infrastructure in participating communities, improving the quality of life for residents, providing and improving affordable homeownership and rental housing, serving homeless families, and reducing homelessness, as well as spurring economic development. This next slide is the next steps, where we are currently in the consolidated plan process and how we will be moving forward. The citizen engagement portion of the plan will be completed by October 24th, which means that all of the surveys will be compiled and completed at that particular time. The consolidated plan process overview is what we are presenting to the board today. The first public hearing of the consolidated plan will occur in November of '24. The needs assessment portion of the plan will be completed in December of 2024. The housing market analysis will be completed in December of 2024. The second public hearing for the consolidated plan will be held in January of 2025. The analysis of impediment to fair housing will be completed by the end of February 2025. And then the 2025 Annual Action Plan overview will be presented to the board in March of 2025. The first public hearing for the 25 Action Plan will be held in March of '25. The second public hearing for the Action Plan will be held in April of 2025. Both the CON Plan and the 2025 Annual Action Plan will be submitted for the board's approval in May of 2025. The consolidated plan and the 2025 Action Plan will then be submitted to HUD on May, by May the 16th. Now, before ending, I would like to also acknowledge Chris Snyder, the Community Planning Administrator and Associate Planner Katie Dyson, and their work compiling all the data that is needed for the CON Plan, as well as their work in keeping us on schedule through this entire process. So that is the end of our overview. Thank you, Commissioners, for your attention. And with that, we welcome any questions.
Thank you. I'll go ahead to Vice President Drew.
Thank you. Thanks for the presentation. I have a couple of questions about the survey results, so I don't know if you're the person to answer.
Yes, please.
So as I look through this, and having been privy to a number of surveys for different things, I'm wondering, when you presented options to the people that were responding to the survey, you list out four priorities. How many options were given to begin with?
That's a great question, and I appreciate that question. I'd say we had a differing amount of survey answers for those survey items. I'd say it was roughly between five and six per question. So the objective was, for each of the survey items, was for survey participants to drag and drop their answers and rank it in order from one to three. But they had anywhere between five and seven responses that they could choose from for each question.
And was there an option to say, hey, if something that you would prioritize wasn't listed here, what is it?
Yes, ma'am. We had an option to select other, and there was a follow-up question for people to answer and populate within open field.
Okay, great. So in that case, are these listed in priority ranking as to how? Okay, they are. So it's, well, it's a one to four. It's very informative, because we're making policy decisions about all of this stuff.
Absolutely.
And it's gratifying in some ways to see, oh, yeah, that makes sense, that's what we're hearing, you know? And others, there are some things that are popping up here that I would not have expected. So thank you very much for providing this information, it's really very helpful.
Absolutely.
Thanks for the process. It's, you know, it's as things should be done, right, to get the input from the community. So thanks for doing that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Dumas.
Thank you both for your presentations. I had the same question about whether or not these answers were in order. And they are. It would be helpful for me if there was maybe either a percentage for the first one, or either the number out of the 454. Was it 200 who said that preventing homelessness was important, or whichever one? If you could add a percentage or a number, that would be helpful. And then I was going to ask, and maybe Maria can answer this, but the HUD allocation of 5.4 million, how does that compare to what we got the last time in our five-year consolidation plan? Is it about the same?
It's actually about the same. It's just an average. We generally, we've ranged between 5.3, 5.4. The 2024 entitlement was 5.3. But I think, I believe back in '22, we were closer to 5.4 million. So it just varies.
And so there is a gap. When you mentioned how much we're allocated for each program, there was an obvious gap as I added it up. So is a gap for administration considered in that? Is that why it doesn't come up to 5.4 million?
Well, the breakdown of the entitlements for each year, the admin and planning are included in that. It's probably just more of adding, a rounding situation there. It should be 3.4 CDVG, 1.3 for home, and then 299. Yeah, it, I believe it's just a rounding situation.
I came up with 4.9.
Four?
Almost 5 million.
Well, out of a total of 5.4 million, yeah, three, say 3.3 million, 1.3 or 3.2, 1.3 for home, that's 4.5. And then the 2.99 are close to 300 for ESG. That comes up to just about, just over 3 million, 3 million. Maybe my math is a little skewed.
Well, I'm just saying that doesn't equal to 5.4. My only question was, was the gap, was that because of administration was included in?
No, that's not it. Administration is included in all three of the figures there, so just this calculation.
Maybe you can let me know later.
Yes.
And then the other thing I was excited about is that, as we looked at the priorities for the surveys, this board is hitting the mark. We're hitting the targets as far as where we've been funding items, and what we saw were priorities, and we're just right on it. We're right where the people say their needs are. And so this was just really helpful to see this. And one small thing is when we look on the map, the heat map, I was just wondering, people with a little less vision, maybe you could just do like, instead of blue, light blue, dark blue, maybe like red and green and yellow, so I can see it more, you know, for me, just for me.
Understood.
Okay, I appreciate it. But I appreciate all the work. I know a lot of work went into this, and you can tell it. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for the work. I was going to ask about the colors, but not necessarily selection of colors, but just looking at the different zip codes. One of the things I think did a great job in terms of outreach and having papers and those kind of things, but we just had the Coalition for Homeless Folks. And I don't know if there's a way we can reach out to them, because basically, people who are not homeless, they just have to have a kind heart to say, I care about the homeless. But we're not hearing from the people that really are affected, what can help prevent you or get you back on track? What do you want to see? And I don't know, maybe with the outreach we're doing, I don't know if that can happen, or some way through the coalition or strategies to be able to incorporate that, because I'd like to hear from some folks. Because a lot of times, people, like you said, think of homelessness as just, oh, it's just people with substance abuse, which is not good. We're trying to fight against people with substance abuse, being homeless and losing everything. But like I said, I read, they talk about a big group that we never talk about who have gone bankrupt because of these medical bills. I mean, one trip to the hospital, one diagnosed with cancer, cancer care is $40,000, $50,000 for the medicine. It has bankrupt a lot of families, but we don't talk about them. So I just wanted to make sure that if there's some way we can work with strategies to try to, I don't know the answer, strategies would know the better answer, how we can get some input from some of those folks, because we're trying to invest in things to make sure that that does not happen to them. I mean, we're saying tiny houses is the answer, but are they saying tiny houses is the answer? So we want to make sure that their input So, we want to make sure that their input is included. I know that organizations are saying it, but is the person that's affected saying it?
Yeah.
So, that's kind of, yeah, so we just want to have that included, since we're talking about 20, what, 2025 or, you know, on down. This is a strategic plan to 2029. The other thing, I, because I thought was kind of interesting, because when I see this, when we get this HUD dollars, these are for communities, it also deals with disadvantaged communities as well, and it's interesting when we see bike trails. And my issue, I wouldn't say my issue, I would have to say what I'm hearing from people who voices are not being heard on these bike trails, is when a bike trail goes into a neighborhood, is usually the first sign of gentrification. What do I mean by that? We use these numbers of poverty, and we get the poverty money, and then we put infrastructures in that eventually will get rid of the folks that we use the actual numbers to get the money. We're starting to see that in a variety of neighborhoods, and they call it gentrification, because bikes almost cost $2,000. So, how can I be in a poor community, barely pay for groceries, but I got enough money for a bike? So, these bike trails aren't like it used to be. In fact, people were running people off bikes. I remember when they were in bikes in the West End, they were getting pulled over and searched by police, because they said, these bikes, you, we don't want the bikes. Now, we've got a new way of bikes, and I'm for bike trails, but a lot of times when you see them come up in a black community or a poor community, in a couple of months, most of the time, the community begins to change, is what I've been hearing. And West End ain't the West End that my grandma lived in, at 1082 Lynn Street, with incinerators and nobody cared. You know, some of these communities, Madisonville ain't the same Madisonville. I went to Withrow. It ain't the same Madisonville. We've got one black-owned restaurant holding on, Millie's, barely holding on, getting squeezed from every location.
Yeah.
These community, Evanston ain't the same Evanston when I went to Withrow. It's not the same, and all of it wasn't bad. I was, oh, Evanston, when I went there, it wasn't bad. Evanston wasn't a bad community. It was a prideful community. Avondale wasn't a bad community, it was a prideful community. So, I'm just wondering, when we start talking about HUD dollars to go into bike trails, and I have supported bike trails. Vice President Drehouse had a, I went with it. Needed a second vote, I went with it. So, I'm for bike trails, but I don't know about using HUD dollars.
Exactly.
Or when we got people that's homeless and people who can't half-make it. So, I just wanted to put that on there. I know there's, we've got sewer line improvements, and just by the answers, right, these are good, I see a lot of people left out, because stuff I'm hearing as I'm in the streets is some of it ain't in here. So, just wanted to make sure. Now, I have heard different interest groups that want these things done, but I haven't heard some of the, some of the other stuff. So, I just, what I saw that, I saw, I said, man, that's going ahead of some of this other stuff that we're hearing. We just heard homeless people can't pay their bills, can't, gas and electric can't be paid. Right now, everything's very expensive, and I don't see it, some of the stuff in here. The last thing I want to say is safety. I'd like to make sure that that's added in the mix, as terms of, when I say safety, senior citizen buildings, I've been hearing that, they don't feel safe in some of these buildings. And, you know, if they're senior and they pay their time and did their thing, I don't want them to be unsafe. So, we want them to have housing, but we want them also to have safe housing. So, that's kind of what I wanted. And then the last thing, with people with disabilities, I'm super proud of the project that we're doing with LAD, but I want to make sure where they include, it might not be those houses, but people with disabilities, was there a survey, a way they could respond? You may already have done that, and if so, just wanted to make sure it's highlighted in here, that people who are blind, people might have hearing issues, whatever it is, there, whatever they think is important has also been included. And like I said, we got time, because this is, like you said, 25 to 29, and you're casting a wide net. So, want to thank you again, and the incentivizing of people filling out a survey, and I'm glad we got a lot of people we didn't have to incentivize. But when we, I don't want people to think it's bad to incentivize, sometimes it's good, because a lot of people don't do surveys, but they pay taxes. When you buy some bubble gum and all that, you paying tax. We take sales tax, and we take everybody's tax.
Right.
So, I'm not completely opposed to some incentivized program if necessary, if that's going to get us more people. But if you say it ain't going to get us more people, then that's fine. But I do want to have a wide net of folks, and people don't like surveys. Most of the people that we already, you know, they've come down here, whatever, they love surveys, they're already telling us, but when you're, you really don't get a wide net until election time, and that's when you hear from everybody who said, I ain't been happy, or I have been happy, or, you know, I'm ticked off, or you hear from everybody, because I'm over there at that board election, I'm hearing a lot of stuff that we not hearing in this particular room. They're not going to pay, getting, come down, a lot of them don't even know where we're at.
Right.
So, just wanted to say, as we're reaching out, and you have reached out, but if we, if there's other ways that you think of, I would encourage you to continuously reach out, as we're making that, like you said, a big consolidated plan. So, that's my only two cents on that particular item.
Thank you.
You got something else? I think Commissioner Biggs is here, listen to me, tell me to get inspired. No, I'm just kidding, but this is a lot of stuff to ask, so.
I get inspired, I do. But you just reminded. But you just reminded me, though, because I had it written down about the 57% response, and that's really unheard of, not to devalue anything she was saying about reaching out to the disabled and all of that, but usually, normally you'll get about 10% back on the survey. So, I, I had that written down to compliment you guys on that. Certainly reach out to those who are lower functioning, or can't hear, or whatever she was saying, but I wanted to compliment you guys on that.
Thank you.
Well, thank you. Yes, Vice President Drehouse.
And I think it's important to note where the respondents are coming from as well, and that's driving some of, you know, what we're seeing in front of us, related to some of these topics. The, I want to piggyback on the bike path or the bike trails conversation just a little bit. I see it's one of the priorities, it's not the top priority, but it's on the list. And it says bike and walk paths, so it's a combo of bike paths, but also it looks like providing access to grocery stores and throughout communities that don't have safe access. Sometimes I think about the trails along the Mill Creek, through Millvale and South Cumminsville and South Fairmount, and some of those areas that we've engaged with to provide some of that access through bike paths, but there are also walking paths for folks that don't have cars, that need easy access. So, I, I wonder if some of that is driving this, although when you look at the map, it's hard to tell what they're referring to, right? Because these communities are sort of different from one another. But anyway, I just wanted to add that, because that's what we are hearing with some of our conversations with, that a lot of the bike paths and walking paths tend to be over on the east side. We're trying to bring some equity to that, and bring it over to the central and to the west side a little bit, and to communities that generally don't see it. And so, I, I understand the idea of folks being distrustful to an extent, but also, I think it depends on how you do it, and who you are serving when you provide this access to pedestrian, you know, walkways, to grocery stores and stuff like that. So, I didn't know, is there insight to, to some of the, do you, you ask these questions, and then do you, is there insight behind some of the priorities that we see?
Yeah, I, I would say that there is certainly insight, especially as we look at where we are seeing a lot of the survey responses. So, I will say that it's really important in the context of the conversation, we are still in the process of collecting a lot of the paper surveys that are still outstanding. So, we have specifically sent out surveys to communities that are labeled as low mod income communities, so that, those being Evanston, Mount Healthy, Lakeland, Cheviot, and Gulf Manor. So, we're still in the process of collecting a lot of that data. However, I wanted to make sure to mention, especially in reference to the question with the ranking, specifically looking at walking and bike paths, so just wanted to be sure to provide a high-level overview of what we have collected thus far. However, we are able to aggregate that data to look at how are individuals who have responded to a specific survey question, that have stated that they, their household income is below the household, is below the, I think it was the area median income associated with the household unit size? We'll be able to kind of parse out that data and extrapolate some insights associated with that. We haven't done that just quite yet, as we're still in the process of collecting the data. However, that is something that I believe is of interest to you, and we will be able to produce that once we collect the remainder of our paper surveys.
Thank you. That was helpful. So, all the surveys are not in, the paper ones is on the way.
I level.
I level. Thank y'all so much. I gotta go. So, thank y'all very much. We have no further business. I make a motion to adjourn.
Second?
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Dumas?